Hey, I'm being a Vice President Eliza here. Vice President Eliza here. Comanche Neshlet 1200, Bosque's Chine. Comanche Neshlet 1200, Bosque's Chine. So, Comanche, that's a Che, Coste, Dushanelli. So, Comanche, that's a Che, Coste, Dushanelli. It's good to be with you this morning. It's good to be with you this morning. Here we are at the Police Department. Here we are at the Police Department. We're also doing a Town Hall too. We're also doing a Town Hall too, Presidents in Black Falls area, doing a food distribution. Presidents in Black Falls area doing a food distribution. But I'm here at the Police Department. But I'm here at the Police Department. We're with World Vision, one of the big contributors here in this fight against COVID-19. We're with World Vision, one of the big contributors here in this fight against COVID-19. But they've brought the Navajo Nation about 800 bags of personal protection equipment. But they've brought the Navajo Nation about 800 bags of personal protection equipment. And Carpenter's Brotherhood, the union from Albuquerque, New Mexico. And Carpenter's Brotherhood, the union from Albuquerque, New Mexico, they brought and They brought and pitched in some food, some snacks and some water. pitched in some food, some snacks and some water. But we're here to receive it and we're here to disperse it to our EMT and our first responders But we're here to receive it and we're here to disperse it to our EMT and our first responders here on Navajo, so 800 bags. here on Navajo, so 800 bags. And we're very appreciative of it. And we're very appreciative of it. And this is just, I guess, the ceremonial, Leslie, to receive it. And this is just, I guess, the ceremonial, Leslie, to receive it. And just, God bless World Vision and the Brothershead, the Brotherhood of the Carpenter's And just, God bless World Vision and the Brothershead, the Brotherhood of the Carpenter's Union out of Albuquerque and New Mexico. Union out of Albuquerque and New Mexico. So, but as we always do, opening up in prayer on our, this is, I don't have my watch, our So, but as we always do, opening up in prayer on our, this is, I don't have my watch, our Town Hall here, COVID-19 update. Town Hall here, COVID-19 update. So let's open up in prayer as we always do. So let's open up in prayer as we always do. If you would indulge me. If you would indulge me. Shiddeh and God, Bohnee God, we thank you. Shiddeh and God, Bohnee God, we thank you. We ask for your blessing today, Lord. We ask for your blessing today, Lord. We thankful for the moisture recently, Lord. We thankful for the moisture recently, Lord. We ask your blessing to be with us, Lord, your presence to be with us, Lord. We ask your blessing to be with us, Lord, your presence to be with us, Lord. We pray your blessings upon World Vision and the Brotherhood Carpenter's Union, Lord, We pray your blessings upon World Vision and the Brotherhood Carpenter's Union, Lord, out of Albuquerque, New Mexico. out of Albuquerque, New Mexico. Lord, all the hands that laid hand to this great work, Father, bless them mightily. Lord, all the hands that laid hand to this great work, Father, bless them mightily. Withhold no good thing from them, Lord, in Jesus' name. Withhold no good thing from them, Lord, in Jesus' name. We thank you again. We thank you again. We ask your wisdom to be with us, which is the principal thing, Lord. We ask for your wisdom to be with us, which is the principal thing, Lord. We pray that many of our people, Lord, all across the land, Lord, would hear the data We pray that many of our people, Lord, all across the land, Lord, would hear the data and the new knowledge and the information, Lord, and be blessed by it, Lord, and act and the new knowledge and the information, Lord, and be blessed by it, Lord, and act accordingly. accordingly. Father, we pray your blessings across our nation, Lord, heal our people. Father, we pray your blessings across our nation, Lord, heal our people. Lord, be with those that are mourning right now, all 580 plus of them, Lord. Lord, be with those that are mourning right now, all 580 plus of them, Lord. Gosh, we just give you all the praise and the honor that's due your name. Gosh, we just give you all the praise and the honor that's due your name. Ask you to be with our people, Lord, all across the land, those that are mourning. Ask you to be with our people, Lord, all across the land, those that are mourning. Give them strength. Give them strength. And Lord, extend your loving hand, your mercy, Lord, and your touch to them, Lord. And Lord, extend your loving hand, your mercy, Lord, and your touch to them, Lord. In Jesus' name, touch them right where they are. In Jesus' name, touch them right where they are. We thank you again. We thank you again. Be with us in this meeting, in this Town Hall, Lord, and be with President and the team, Be with us in this meeting, in this Town Hall, Lord, and be with President and the team, Lord, as they disperse and hand out food boxes and supplies, Lord. Lord, as they disperse and hand out food boxes and supplies, Lord. God bless those donors, Lord, all across the land, in Jesus mighty name, we pray. God bless those donors, Lord, all across the land, in Jesus mighty name, we pray. Amen. Amen. And so, without further ado, I want to introduce the President of the Navajo Nation, Jonathan And so, without further ado, I want to introduce the President of the Navajo Nation, Jonathan Nez, over in Black Falls, Arizona. Nez, over in Black Falls, Arizona. Take it away, sir. Take it away, sir. Uh oh, not sure if we lost him or not. Uh oh, not sure if we lost him or not. I saw he may have dropped off. I saw he may have dropped off. And so, right now, let's just go and ad lib a little bit until President jumps back on And so, right now, let's just go and ad lib a little bit until President jumps back on again. again. Again, as I said earlier, over here at the Police Department, some of you remember that? Again, as I said earlier, over here at the Police Department, some of you remember that?
Right, well, good morning to everybody. Right, well, good morning to everybody. And this is Jonathan Nez. And this is Jonathan Nez. I am in, close to Loop, Arizona, on our way to... I am in, close to Loop, Arizona, on our way to... The... The... I'll be doing a food and supply distribution in the Black Falls area. I'll be doing a food and supply distribution in the Black Falls area. Projects that are hap... Projects that are hap... Happening throughout... Happening throughout... Individuals, Rex Coots, the deputy... Individuals, Rex Coots, the deputy... Is on the call today. Is on the call today. It's an update, but we are going to be vis... It's an update, but we are going to be vis... And connected. And connected. And we appreciate... And we appreciate... A... A... Point on behalf of our Navajo citizens. Point on behalf of our Navajo citizens. So every Tuesdays and Thursdays, we give you an update. So every Tuesdays and Thursdays, we give you an update. So today, we're going to give... So today, we're going to give... You know, here on the Navajo Nation... You know, here on the Navajo Nation... 95 have tested positive and... 95 have tested positive and... Positive, 7,000... Positive, 7,000... 588 have... 588 have... Have tested COVID-19. Have tested COVID-19. So, I know we're having some issues with the Internet. So, I know we're having some issues with the Internet. So let me pause here. So let me pause here. Let me go ahead and give the time over to Vice President. Let me go ahead and give the time over to Vice President. Let me see if I can get to a place where I can get connection. Let me see if I can get to a place where I can get connection. So Eli, if you could give the time over to Vice President, then I'll come back up to So Eli, if you could give the time over to Vice President, then I'll come back up to join you all. join you all. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. All right. Well, you heard it, sometimes the Internet here on the Navajo Nation is very suspect, Well, you heard it, sometimes the Internet here on the Navajo Nation is very suspect, but I guess I'm in the right spot. but I guess I'm in the right spot. I got three bars of LTE here and headphone. I got three bars of LTE here and headphone. But here we are, as I said earlier, over by the Police Department here in Winderock, But here we are, as I said earlier, over by the Police Department here in Winderock, Arizona, the Navajo Nation's capital. Arizona, the Navajo Nation's capital. And we're also here with World Vision, organization, humanitarian relief across the globe. And we're also here with World Vision, organization, humanitarian relief across the globe. But they've given us some, 800 bags of... But they've given us some, 800 bags of... We see here is a lot of great PPEs, hand sanitizer, there's a safety vest, there's We see here is a lot of great PPEs, hand sanitizer, there's a safety vest, there's gloves, there's a lot of other things, socks, probably some face mask. gloves, there's a lot of other things, socks, probably some face mask. Hey, you need those face masks, right? Hey, you need those face masks, right? So, but, and lastly, there's some wipes. So, but, and lastly, there's some wipes. So you know, you gotta have all these things. So you know, you gotta have all these things. And so, who do we have here? And so, who do we have here? First from Seattle, Washington, the CEO of World Vision, sir. First from Seattle, Washington, the CEO of World Vision, sir. Bags of personal protection equipment and some snacks. And also contributing to this was the Brotherhood, the Brotherhood Union of Carpenters out of Albuquerque, New Mexico. They gave water and snacks and whatnot. So Reed, tell us about what's in the bag here.
Yeah, we've got all kinds of great supplies here. Everything from face mask to wipes to hand sanitizer, try to help keep everybody safe as they're out patrolling and working on the front lines, gloves, so a lot of protective equipment, and also things like socks and chargers and, you know, snacks, as we've mentioned. Just to say thank you. All of the frontline workers on the Navajo Nation have been working for months, putting themselves in harm's way, all of our police officers, firefighters, EMTs. We just really want to come alongside and give them the equipment and the supplies they need to be safe. And so, it's our honor to be here today with you guys. And we look forward to just, you know, continuing to partner, whatever we can do to help through this pandemic, whether it's food or PPE supplies, we stand shoulder to shoulder with you guys.
All right. Hey Reed, can you tell me who else is here with you? I saw you brought some staff and we know staff's essential, right? Because we can't do all the work.
Absolutely. Yeah, we have today our site manager Quincy Walker. He manages our Dallas warehouse. And so, that's where most of these supplies come from. It's a 60,000 square foot warehouse, has all kinds of new supplies donated by corporations. And Quincy works directly with Arnold and others to ship these supplies, you know, on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, depending on the need. We also have some folks from our headquarters, Laura Reinhardt, Seville, and Matt, who work on our content team. And they capture, you know, photos and videos. And so, they're here today to capture and document this and hopefully share this story to all of World Vision's donors in the US and around the world to really highlight this great partnership.
Oh man, well, you're so right, you know. And we couldn't pull all this off without you. And so, we sure appreciate all the donors all across this time, the last nine months of this pandemic. Many people have stepped up and rose to the occasion, and certainly, World Vision was one of them. We've also had Samaritan's Purse, Boots on the Ground, Water Mission. I could go on and Encore was here, you know. And then here is where you start listing names, you risk leaving somebody out. So we just appreciate and we thank our Heavenly Father for sending all these people. We know every good gift is from the above, the Father of the lights. And so, we appreciate this. And so, again, as we're waiting for President to get online out there in Black Falls, Arizona, Loop area, we're going to steal some time here. So we're just appreciative again, you know. It takes many hands, it takes a lot of donors, especially to, you know, to give the resources and the time and the volunteer to bring the, all of these synergistic efforts together to pull off things like this here. And so, to bring, and the end product here is 800 bags. I call them kitten kaboodles. But again, we have, you know, all of the PPEs, there's some hand wipes, there's a mask, there's gloves, there's socks, there's more masks, and there's some hand sanitizer. So that's hand sanitizer. So it's not energy drink. So, but hey, you know, maybe we're planting a seed for that next, there's some more hand sanitizer. So we just want our frontline people and our first responders to be safe here. And you know, during this pandemic, it's been proven, right, to wash your hands 20 seconds, you know, it suds it up real nice. And if you don't have that access to water, which a lot of our people don't have access to water, use hand sanitizer, right? 70% alcohol, so to kill that, that virus is known to kill the virus. And also, you know, mask, it's proven that we keep our masks on in close proximity to others, maintain social distancing, six feet. And then the best thing, right, is just to stay home. But we know, we can't all stay home. So the reality of it is just be as safe as you can while you're out there. And you know, to also, you know, wear your face mask and to continue to just be vigilant of your surroundings, right? And at that, the local governments, the municipalities, the state governments, they also mandate, you know, a particular other protocol that'll keep us safe. So right now, in this present time, we are experiencing severe spiking all around us. Utah, Salt Lake City, Arizona, Phoenix, the metropolitan areas, Albuquerque and New Mexico, a lot of these regions, which our people readily go to, to, you know, buy food and supplies and hay and feed and hardware stuff here. That's where President and I recommend buying Navajo, buy local. And I know we don't have much of a strong, robust economy, but this is a good time to start, right? Early on, President and I said from the outset, if we got to be sequestered at home, if we got to keep limiting, limit our, you know, our travel abroad, then let's get better because of it. Let's come out of this a little bit stronger. By one degree, we could change our environment. By one degree of extra effort, we can, you know, mend relationships with our family if we got to stay home. Let's read the Bible more, let's pray more, let's study more, let's become better sons and daughters, let's become better parents, right? So we all can use this pandemic to become better human beings. Because at the end of the day, guess what? We are going to be better human beings when this is all said and done. And so, President and I have been advocating for that, but much more, our economy. Buy Navajo, buy local, stay home, don't travel abroad. We have 11 grocery stores here on Navajo, and we're, the opposite of the President, Vice President is working with our other leaders to create change there. Let's bring at least six more grocery stores in strategically located areas across the Navajo Nation, so our people don't have to travel great distances, right? And in that, our tax revenues that we generate locally, 1% of that junk food tax, the 2% of the junk food tax, 1% goes to our first responders. You remember about four or five months ago, we had eight brand new units. We had EMT, first responder vehicle. Man, these things were looking sharp. They were the latest, greatest vehicles that are out there, four-wheel drive, they have the latest technology, police departments. And you know, we also have, you know, we've been blessed to have all hands on deck, our first responders, our EMTs, our fire department, then we have our public safety, our police, and on and on. We have, we've had people rise to the occasion and what with all the volunteers as well who put themselves in harm's way, become frontline people. You know, as we said, we're in this together. And so, as we wait for President out in the hot zones out there abroad, Black Falls, Arizona, to give food boxes, to disperse, you know, all of those donations that other organizations have given to the nation. Again, I mentioned World Vision, Samaritan's Purse, Core, there's, you know, there are just so many, many organizations, Water Mission, I could go on and on. Hopefully, I have a list for you that I could read all those donations. And again, thankful from the bottom of our hearts here on Navajo that we are blessed, we are blessed to have such fine people, such fine organizations, continue to reach out to the Navajo Nation to bless us, the government. But we, as you see President out there in Black Falls, we immediately get it back into the hands of the people where it's really needed. And so, we just wish the best for our people, praying for you all, and we'll continue to, I guess, continue to try to bring change to the Navajo Nation. As those supplies come and are donated, we get them right back out to the first line, the frontline people, and we'll continue to pray for the Navajo Nation. And so, you know, it takes, as I said earlier, it takes a many hands that contribute to that. So all across the globe, we appreciate that. Again, we, I know our Heavenly Father by His scripture says that He gives seed to the sower. And those of you who respond and are compelled by the Spirit of God, you enact yourself, you participate, you donate, you volunteer your time, you pray for organizations like this here. And you know, when there's ever a calamity around the world, World Vision as a first responder, they'll be there with supplies, with, you know, people, boots on the ground, as they say. And we just look forward to, you know, continuing to just, again, since I have Reed here, I'm going to maybe ask him, what is World Vision doing right now besides helping here on the Navajo Nation? Reed?
Great question. Thank you for that. As Vice President mentioned, World Vision is working around the world. So here to... From everywhere, from Chicago to Atlanta, to serve vulnerable families. We're working with different Native communities across the country, you know, Pine Ridge, Rosebud, other places in North Dakota. We're also down on the border in Mexico, Texas and Mexico serving vulnerable families down there with PPE and food and other supplies that folks need. But as Vice President just mentioned, we also respond and work all around the world. So areas like, you guys have probably heard of Hurricane Etta that just hit Central America. We have World Vision staff on the ground right now in Honduras, Guatemala, El Salvador, hoping to bring resources to all the people affected by that storm. So a lot of families, you know, and what's great about World Vision is we already work in those communities. So we have Indigenous staff who are there who know the vulnerable family. Appreciate all your, any prayers, right? There's folks across this country that are suffering and people are suffering around the world, not only from just the COVID outbreak, just but from other disasters and poverty. So we appreciate any of your prayers and we pray regularly for the folks that are in the field, serving those families across the world. And so, just a great honor to be here today and serving families. And you know, we're looking forward to distributing these kits to all the frontline heroes that are working every day to keep people safe. So thank you.
Well, we sure definitely appreciate it, Reed. Thank you for you and all the work you've done and all the work of your people and all the people at World Vision. So from our hearts to yours, thank you. Yeah, we thank you, God bless you. So I hear, I understand President is ready. And so, back to President, Jonathan Nez, out in Black Falls, Arizona. Take it away, sir.
Mr. President, are you out there? Did you find some good Wi-Fi?
All right. I think we got in an area where we got better connection, you know. That's what we're dealing with here on the Navajo Nation with Wi-Fi connection. So doing our very best to get connected to the grid. And what we are doing here in this community is on the north side of Loop, Arizona, Loop is close by, you can see Loop in the vicinity. You got the San Francisco Peaks behind me and headed in... You got the San Francisco Peaks behind me and headed into the Bennett Free's area. And, uh, we're gonna be doing a food distribution at eleven AM. Once we get done there at the Black Falls Bible Church, we're gonna head to Cameron Chapter, help them, uh, do a food and supply distribution. The other thing that we're gonna be doing today, and which Rex Coots will be talking about later when NTU A does their update, is we're gonna actually see, uh, a community and a family get connected to the electricity, uh, line today. So, you know, a lot of people are grateful, uh, for, uh, the work that's being done in connecting our community members to the electricity, the grid, and also the water lines, the cisterns, uh, that, those projects that have been, uh, uh, completed and that are gonna be completed, and there's many others that are there. So Vice President, yeah, World Vision. Vice President, for defiance. Firefighters, then, then, uh, correctional officers, first responders. So here needs and, uh, World Vision. I call Kierzak funds. He basically So I know the electricity. So Uh, no, uh, and NTU A has neck
All of the data, they present. All the mill years, it's like. T in a nail. No, they are. I should have got it. He presents. She. They need never to go down. Hey, yeah. Now so. Hey, yeah. But can't do it. We all. All that. All that. The more. So all that. The more. It's a piece of that. Then do it. Now. I can. My share. Pans. You know, I think. You don't see pans. Only he can. He can. Now, come to them. We can. But I. Don't. Don't. Can I? So hey, I just. Besok. And person. Hey, what? Hey, yeah. Present. She not. 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 No. And.
So let me go back to English. Eli, if you could put the slide up. The slide. Uh, we have one hundred and twenty eight thousand nine hundred and thirteen. People that have been tested, all those individuals. On the Navajo Nation that live here on the Navajo Nation. And um. We uh. Have tested over fifty percent. Of our Navajo people here. Again, more than most states, more than most countries out there. And uh, we also have. Uh. Confirmed cases of twelve thousand six hundred and forty one. That's a start to today. Those have recovered, seven thousand seven hundred and ninety five. And those that we've lost, and I continue our prayers. To for our people who lost loved ones, five hundred. And ninety four people have lost their lives. To COVID nineteen. Uh, and so let's. Take this virus seriously here on the Navajo Nation. And I said in Navajo, we really need to take this virus serious. You know, let's let's stay local, stay home. Vice President said. You know, that we we opened up our our businesses on the weekend, those essential businesses, shopping centers, gas stations, laundromats. And you know, those of you that live on the Navajo Nation, you know how stringent. Those business criterias are in in fighting COVID nineteen. You go to BASH's, you get a temperature check. You go to uh. The store, there's hand washing stations. You know, things like that. And you compare it to off the nation, Motertowns. They're not as stringent. The further you go off, there's nothing. So it's safer to be here, and that's one of the reasons why we uh. Open those businesses just for a short period of time, seven AM to three PM. Uh, for those uh essential items uh that you need. And um, go ahead to the next uh uh slide there, Eli. If you look at the Navajo Nation. From October seventeen to October thirty, if this is a week and a half old. If you look at it, you can see the progression. You see a lot of red in these communities. And then the green was, they're okay. But if you go to the next slide. Uh, you can see. That. Uh, we are looking at. A progression and and you you see in in May, we went. At our highest point. And then we went back down, and then we're going back up now. We haven't. Uh. Reached. Uh. The highest number that we've had on the Navajo Nation average. Let's not beat the first wave, ladies and gentlemen. That's not a record we want to break. And we need your help. You know, America, the United States of America is going through three waves now. And you you see. In those three waves. That the wave that they're in, that we're in right now. Is. At its highest point. Its highest point. To beat the first wave, to beat the second wave, and now we've been in over a hundred thousand cases within twenty four hours for the past few days now. Here on Navajo, we've been over a hundred for the past few days. I think yesterday was seventy. Uh, which was encouraging, but the now, I think it was uh. Uh, today, we'll see what those numbers are. So what we're saying is to stay vigilant and be careful. You know, be careful, take this uh virus seriously, please. And and you see the death numbers going up again. You know, when when it peaks. What comes after is. The the increase in in the deaths. And so what we want to do is keep those numbers down, ladies and gentlemen, and please help, help us. Help your neighbors, help your elders, help your kids. Stay here. Nothing wrong with that. Be on the Navajo Nation. I see, you know how I know, I see pictures of people taking their photos of each other off the Navajo Nation, you know? And saying, oh, I'm over here, I'm over there. And and you know what? Many of those individuals, some of those individuals are bringing the virus back to the Navajo Nation, spreading it in our communities. And we have uncontrollable spreads here on the Navajo Nation. And we need to take it upon ourselves. To hold each other accountable. Go to the next slide there, uh Eli. If you look at the uh progression again. Of the uh, the cases. You can see, and this is where I want you to to see this. Uh, in re- in regards to the first wave. And now we're on the second wave, and the you know, the numbers are going up. If you look at the the slide there, it shows. The first wave in May, right? It it went, it dipped into that purple-yellow area, which is the red, which is uncontrollable spread. Now, if you look at the orange and you look at at yeah, uh, the numbers from yesterday. Uh, in these past few weeks. Look at where we're at, way on the far right-hand side, that's where we're at. It's starting to go up. And that's why I was saying, let's not beat that record of our first wave, ladies and gentlemen. Let's wear our mask, let's social distance, let's not social gather, let's not have family gatherings. Holidays are coming, yes, we understand that. But there's no vaccine. You know, yesterday Pfizer Biointech said that they might have a vaccine that's ninety, eighty percent, ninety percent effective. And uh, we don't know yet. And it's not offered yet. And so until then, we have to continue. To keep those numbers down, ladies and gentlemen, next slide. Uh. Eli. So. What? What we're we're wanting. For everybody, and I'm punching my iPad here, that's why I'm uh. Uh, looking at this. So if you look at the uh, the Navajo Nation. You could see the red. Right in the middle, all the red uh on the Navajo Nation. That's the United States slide, Eli. And it shows dark red. Throughout this country. And. It's uncontrollable. We need to uh really. Bring those numbers down here on Navajo. Uh, this past week, a couple of days ago, the Utah Governor Gary Herbert issued a mandate that public should be wearing masks. We should be wearing masks because it's a mandate here. Uh, you should be doing the same in uh, you know, in New Mexico, and then hopefully Arizona will will come. And you can see the progression now. Very yellow. And that red is Utah, the one that's above us. So Utah is ahead of this region in cases, but we're catching up pretty quick. And you can see there. All those dark red states. Really getting impacted hard, impacted heavy. To go to the next slide, Eli, it shows a breakdown on counties. Throughout the United States. And it's a serious, serious. Uh, spread of the virus in this country. And we. Can bring these numbers down. We can do it. I know we can do, we've done it before, we even pushed off one wave. I said, the United States is going through three waves now, we only went through two waves. So we managed to keep one wave out of our nation. We can continue to do that. Uh. Let's uh all listen to our our public health professionals. Uh, and help each other out during this time. Later on today, we're gonna be going, we're gonna be going to uh. Uh, Tubus City, Tunestez, Western Agency, we have. Care Act projects being completed as we speak in um, Tonaliya, Tubus City. Uh, in Kaibicho area, so we're gonna be visiting those today. Vice President is there in Fort Defiance, Winderock area. Uh, thank you again to World Vision, I did say this in Navajo, World Vision for the donations throughout this pandemic. Great partner that we have, they help us with food items, help us with even kid items and hygiene kits and all that. Uh, they're uh right now uh handing out. Uh, these care packages, personal protection equipment to the first responders, the police officers there. Uh, the EMTs uh and the corrections, you know, all those individuals up in those areas, I think they're gonna be going. Uh, to the um, the other programs as well to hand out personal protection equipment. Again, we wanted to say uh thank you to Vice President and that team for being out there. You know, this is how we do leadership, you know, we spread ourselves out, we try to cover as much ground as we can. We're gonna be in Cameron, Cameron, I'm sorry, not Cameron. Um, yeah, we'll be in Cameron this afternoon at one PM. Those of you that are. Wanting some care packages, uh, we are also gonna be at Black Falls Bible Church, and I think it started, yep, eleven o'clock now. Started the uh, the food and the supply distribution, we should be there in about maybe fifteen minutes. Uh, there is local out there, so bundle up. We'll be in Cameron this afternoon, then we're gonna be going to Tubus City to check out. Uh, the um. Uh, the the INTUA and the CARES Act uh funds being you uh being used to uh connect people to the homes. Then we're gonna also have a uh, uh, meeting. Uh, on the internet with other uh people. Uh, in terms of getting the CARES Act uh funds expended. Uh, Council's in session today as well, talking about the CARES Act funds. Uh, we have meetings in between. You know, the reason why we're out here a lot is a lot of our meetings are video and teleconference. So it allows us, allows me to get get out into the communities and also have meetings in between. You know, before we had meetings face to face, we had to be at either here, Winderock or other places. Uh, because of the pandemic, everything went virtual, so it gives me an opportunity to go back. I know some some of our people out there are saying, hey, stay at the house, stay in Winderock. But if I stay in Winderock all the time, then the other people are gonna say, uh, he never leaves the Winderock, you know, you you never win in a position like this. But what I just want to tell you is our leadership is hands-on. We're not gonna be sitting in a cave, uh, pushing the uh computer keys and uh spewing a bunch of negativity. We're gonna be als- also out there in the community, help the community, because I think it's very important that our people see their leaders on the front lines. On the front line, so that it gets some comfort to our Navajo people. And to know that we're doing our very best, not just me, all the frontline workers, not just the Vice President, all the correctional officers, all the first responders, all the senior citizen staff. There are so many people that are working throughout this pandemic. There are some that will just sit behind a computer to just spew a bunch of negativity. I I challenge those that are spewing negativity to be a part of the solution. If you want to say negative stuff, come out to a uh food distribution and help. And see how it is and how our people are struggling during this time. They're very thankful for what everyone is doing throughout the Navajo Nation, Navajo Nation employees. I know I see a lot of negative comments about Navajo Nation employees, stop that. They are on the front lines for you. Ones that are spewing this negativity and those that are grateful, thank you so much. For saying thank you to our Navajo Nation workers, our our partners out there, we're doing an outstanding job. World Vision, uh Core, uh, we also have World Central Kitchen with Ollie. Uh, and many others that are out there on a daily basis to help our people, and they should be uh thanked. And also remembered in prayer to keep this virus away from them. And we do our very best to. They uh. Protect it with all the equipment that we have, you know, I have my mask, I also have a vest covering, uh, our gloves, hand sanitizers. And that's what we do uh on a daily basis when we're on the community. So we're doing this for you Navajo people because we love you and we want to keep you safe. And you know, a lot of people are actually volunteering their time and being a part of it. So thank you so much, Vice President. Thank you so much for the work you're doing over there in uh Fort Defiance with World Vision, handing out uh personal protection equipment, hygiene items, food items to our first responders. Because they're always on the front lines, they're not gonna be at these food distributions because they're out there working during that time. And Vice President is out there right now, making sure that they are taken care of as well. So let's remember them in prayer, thank you so much, God bless you and God bless our great Navajo Nation. Uh, Vice President, back to you there in uh Winderock, Arizona. We'll see you soon, thank you so much.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Vice President of Navajo Nation, Myron Lizer is continuing to distribute kits uh from World Vision to our Navajo Nation first responders. And he will provide a quick comment before going on to.
Yeah, I just wanted to say shout out, uh, thank you for President in Black Falls and uh out where they are, and also the team, thank you for all that. And uh shout out to World Vision today, Carpenter's Union out of New Mexico, thank you for all they do. PPE's here going out to our EMTs, our first responders, uh, fire department and uh public safety, so from uh World Vision and um Reed and uh Quincy, Elora and all those. Just from the bottom of their heart, we appreciate the Navajo Nation Vice President here, uh, thankful for the leadership, exemplary leadership of Jonathan Nez. Our President of the Navajo Nation, and even Arnold, let's give Arnold a shout out, logistics, yeah, he does a lot and coordinate. He helps coordinate all these. We just want to be thankful and uh give a shout out to all those uh. Everybody. And we got all the PPE's going out to where they need to go, so uh many more to go out, Shiprock, all other agencies, I'm hoping to hit all the agencies.
I just wanted to say a special shout out to Arnold Silversmith, because this was really his vision, his idea. We've been working closely with him uh all throughout the pandemic, sending stuff down, but he said he wanted to get supplies to the front workers, he wanted to get PPE. And also something nice, so just thank you to Arnold for all that he does to keep all the logistics flowing and just.
Just like we've always said, by one degree, you can create a change in your environment, especially during a pandemic, right? One degree. Of extra effort. As we burn through gloves like crazy, we burn through hand sanitizer like crazy, you know, the mask, I could go on and on. On PPE's are. And uh, I think this is one degree of improving uh the health and welfare of our first responders all across Navajo. So we're thankful again to World Harvard, our World Vision and appreciate their time, collaboration, and all the donors all across. The world. Their time, uh, this is what makes the world go around, right? Love our fellow man, our fellow neighbor, and uh, you know, uh, well, long ago, our Creator gave us a message, right? To love our God, our Father, with all our mind, with all our heart, with all our soul, and the second greatest commandment is to love our neighbor as ourself. Here's what you see, loving our neighbor as ourself, just making sure that they're safe during a pandemic, so I appreciate it. So God bless you, I want to introduce Rex Lee Jim, the former Vice President. Uh, I'm sorry. Rex Coontz, I just nominated you for Vice President, so as soon as I'm done, man, you'll be the next Vice President. Hey, we love Rex Coontz over there at INTUA, he's definitely doing a great job out there, appreciate him. Was on a call with Rex this morning, you know, talking about uh uh making our our process here, spending the federal uh the dollars there, you know, the CARES Act money. Uh, bringing water, bringing power, bringing infrastructure to our people all across Navajo, but uh just trying to streamline and try to make this process a whole lot easier. So we appreciate Rex, appreciate INTUA, so thank you, uh Rex, for chiming in here. Uh, give the people an update, Rex, I know there's been a lot of changes and improvements here, just the last twenty four hours, right? Hopefully we've streamlined it, the process a little bit more for you. So ladies and gentlemen, Rex Coontz, uh, manager over there at uh INTUA.
Well, thank you, everybody, uh Rex Coontz, Deputy General Manager with INTUA, appreciate the opportunity. Honorable President Nez and and Vice President Lizer to be able to give an update on where we are, uh, with the projects that we were, we were given the honor of um executing. Um, we have, we have basically three major uh groups of projects, um, uh. We have electric projects, we have broadband projects, and we have some water and wastewater projects. Um, on the electric, I'm gonna start with the off-grid solar, we were authorized to attempt to put in a thousand solar units um for homes that are too far from electric grid. And it was an open application process, so it's one of the few projects where there there's actually, it's it's an open application where people can apply. Um, and we got over um a thousand applications, I think one thousand one hundred and ninety four applications have come in. Uh, we've visited the majority of them, about a hundred and, or thousand one sixteen. Uh, we did find uh three hundred and sixty of them that are feasible, and there was uh five hundred and forty that weren't feasible. Uh, just to kind of give you an idea of some of those things, um, we have applications where there's not actually a home on site, or maybe it was a burnout home. Uh, people needed more than just just the this this uh power system, they needed a lot more services and needs. Uh, there were, there was some where the home was not adequate um enough to actually install um house wiring and things of that nature. Uh, the those things have to be structurally sound enough to support uh the install, um. Otherwise, it could become uh uh safety hazard and dangerous. So unfortunately, some were not found to be feasible. We did find a number of homes uh that were actually close to a power line. And we feel that it would be uh much better for those homes to have power line, uh, power line is twenty-four seven. Uh, power, uh, solar is uh very good, you gotta be very conservative, but it doesn't produce power, you know, and and at night hours, you're dependent on your batteries. Uh, there, you know, it it's not strong enough to to do electric heat, um. Uh, electric stoves, those types of things, um, it's mostly lights, um. Solar refrigerator, things of that nature, and you gotta be conservative, so uh an electric power extension is mu- a much better service. So right now, we have a legislation two seventy-five dash twenty uh that will be going before council uh this afternoon. That just simply ask um to modify some of the language in the awards to give us some flexibility so that we can serve. Um. What services is is most feasible. So for solar systems, we we are gonna put solar there if if um if that's the only service that they that they can get, uh, which was the intent. But for those that we found um that are closer to power line, we'd we'd like to be able to put a power line there and apply those dollars towards the power line extension. So those are the types of things that are in this legislation to ask for some flexibility, it's it's, we're not asking for any more money, we're not changing the projects, we're actually trying to modify best. The best served the people that we we are discovering as we visit them. We've also found um accepted applications from people in other service territories of APS, uh Socorro Electric in the Alamo area. Uh, Continental Divide, CDC. Um, um, and and Hamis Electric. Uh, we have a number of homes there that upon solar application, we're also finding that uh they're closer to one of those other providers' systems. So we are working with those other providers, uh, we will use dollars to to also provide uh electric system to those people. Um, if we work out these cooperative agreements, we have made some agreements with them and and we have some people on on the schedule to to go forward. But again, the legislation will allow us to have that flexibility uh in in delivering the services. Uh, that that we that we'd like to meet for all of these people in different situations. Um. Of those, we have a hundred and thirty seven that are that are ready for um release. Uh, we've acquired four hundred solar systems. Um, they've been, they've been purchased. Um, as I said, one hundred and thirty seven have been scheduled. Uh, we have ninety nine of those homes that are are being housewired at the present time, uh thirty eight have been actually complete housewiring. Uh, there's a number of those, there's seventeen of these homes that belong to veterans, so we're trying to meet all the needs, both on the outside with the services and also on the interior of those services as well. Um, on the electric side, um, uh, the we have uh what we we call capacity projects, these are building the system. And um increasing capacity so that more homes can be connected, uh, creating larger capacities that we're gonna extend. As we're extending these projects um through CARES Act, but also through other funding agencies that happen on an annual basis like CDBG. We constantly have to keep increasing the size of the system in order to accommodate uh the growth. So of the fifty nine capacity projects, we have twenty six of those that have been completed, uh fourteen are under construction. So we have uh more than half um that are in the works, and we expect to be able to complete all those uh by the end of um uh the year as required. On electric connections, our target originally was uh four hundred and ninety eight homes. Uh, and again, in in. Um, these were homes that were already somewhere in the process, uh, they were already pre-identified. Uh, but we have people coming in um wanting to get on the systems, and we have increased that um number up to five hundred and ten now. And out of the five hundred and ten homes, we have three hundred and forty two that have been connected, and they're on, they're working. Okay, so that's about two-thirds of our target, we still have about a hundred and sixty eight left, um. And uh, so that's about thirty, thirty-two percent of the the target left. So we're continuing to to move down that, we have people going out um every day, seven days a week, they're working. Um, the crews uh on uh one of our best days, uh, we we were able to in two days connect twenty-nine homes in two days. So uh when all the conditions are good and right, we we can really move and get get homes served, and you know, we we, as you all know, we have weather coming. Um, so far, it hasn't slowed us in any any fashion, uh, but we're we're pushing very hard to try to get all these homes served. Um, we have um. In the water and wastewater site. We have a a project that was was developed um. To reach out to people that are long distance from systems, uh, called a Cistern system. So we. We um identified uh using Indian Health, in cooperation with Indian House and their their sanitation efficiency system. We identified three hundred and thirty eight homes that needed a so a Cistern system. And a Cistern system is a thousand gallon tank that's put in the ground, they get a septic system for for the out outlet side. Uh, they still have to haul water, but it gives them a thousand gallons on onsite on the home. It can be pumped into the home and they're able to use their normal plumbing uh as as you do in a normal home. So we wanted to reach out to those people that were out in in remote areas, and we and we identified three hundred and thirty eight. Then we looked at it logistically, along with uh Navajo Engineering Construction Authority, who does a lot of this type of work on Navajo, and we partnered with them. Uh, they assessed that they could, with the timeframe, they could get a hundred and fifty of these done before the end of the year. So we embarked on that project, um. We have partnered with Community Development to build additions to the homes that needed plumbing. Um, and have them have them plumbed as well. So um NECA is working um subcontracting with with small businessmen, other firms, as well as NECA staff. And they're currently building these additions, setting foundations and and having them plumbed. Uh, uh, so that they can get services into the home. So out of those, fifty-one of those homes already have been completed. Uh, twenty-two septic systems have been installed. Um, we found that fifty-three of those homes already have electricity. Uh, we have thirty-one that will be getting a solar unit, the solar unit uh will will power up lights, um, some outlets. There's a full-size refrigerator that that is designed to work with the solar system, and it'll also uh power up a pump that will pump the water into the home. Okay, we've also identified thirty-seven that are very close to a power line that we could, we could hook up to a power line as opposed to solar. Again, in the legis- Again, in the legislation this afternoon, we're asking for flexibility to be able to do a power line project as opposed to solar. Um it'll still be the same dollars. We're not asking for any more money, just asking for flexibility in how we deliver the service to the, to the homes uh to make sure that they have a complete service. So those are, that's what's going on with the, the Cistern and solar systems. Um we have water loading stations that we, that we are putting and these are a little bit larger. There was a big effort um by Indian Health Service in their headquarters group that um put in what they call transitional watering stations. Um they tried to spread them out to almost every chapter. These are smaller diameter watering points uh that allow smaller containers up to about a 200 gallon tanker, maybe in the back of a pickup. Um and we're able to do that quickly because that smaller diameter does not stress the water system as much. You can't flow high volume out of it. So we're able to do that without having to do in uh in intensive design wor- uh work to see if the capacity was there. But with that, we also know that there is a need for some larger uh flows uh in some of these watering points. So we have installed um, installed or renovated six that are now in service and working. These have a two-inch outlet that can flow a lot more water. Um we have another five that are under, under construction or basically 90% complete uh in Fort Epi, it's Crown Point, Low Greece with Cameron. Uh those are just about done. Uh Fort Epi is actually in service and the others are, are just the final touches there that, that we need to get done. Uh and then we have five additional water loading stations that we're putting in at Chil Timbito, Inscription House, uh White Cone in Kindleti and one in Pueblo Pantato. So those are, are in the process of getting started um in um November and, and ending in December, throughout December. And then last, we have um four offline wells that we have taken offline because of quality issues. Um nothing that's dangerous uh to the point of um being something that's poisonous, but uh aesthetic issues that cause taste, color, odor, those types of things. And we pulled them offline because they, they caused too much quality issues um in the home. Uh but those are still um good enough to be consumable for construction or uh for livestock. So we're converting those four to livestock-only watering stations where you can, people be able to load up and get livestock water. Uh those, those we're putting there because um during the dry months, we, we run into a lot of people that, that do take a lot of water for livestock from the domestic system. And sometimes it stresses the domestic system to the point where um we run into some shortages and we've gotta go into conservation mode. So we're trying to accommodate that. Um we do know that the nation does have um also other livestock wells and, and livestock water, but these would help, but I think would help um in meeting some of those needs. We, we also are upgrading and renovating 53 of our, our water sources and our, and our wells. And we've already got 42 out of the 53 done, so that project is almost complete. We're also um in the process of drilling three new wells to add water capacity in certain areas where there's a lot of growth or where there's a, a substantial need. Uh the, the project was released recently and we have drillers on site now, so those are in the process of being completed. Um we also have one system that had contamination. It was, it was not an N T U A system. We took it over, removed the contaminant source and uh, but the system was very old, so we're in the process of replacing the entire system now uh through this process and uh uh we didn't, we tested, didn't find any residual effects in the system. But uh just to be certain, we, we're replacing that system so that um there's no possibility of any, any residual effect from the, the previous contamination. We do have some wastewater projects. We're, we're renovating, upgrading um lift stations. And we don't have too many of those types of facilities in our, in our systems, but they, what they do is all, all wastewater flows, gravity flow down to a lagoon. And sometimes feasibility-wise, you may have a, a uh, a growth in the community that, that um gravity-wise cannot feed into the system. So you put in a lift station where it lifts the wastewater and then, and then drops it back into a gravity flow system. So those, those systems, we have to pay close attention to. You know, if they do shut down or fail, everything backs up. So we wanted to modernize them, uh put in new pumps, new equipment, um new technology, things that could communicate with us um through the airways and, and give us alarms quicker and faster so that we can respond to taking care of those issues and maintaining those systems. So those are all um in the design process and many of them will start to be released for construction. Uh we also have um uh some uh, uh, uh major core system that's being um renovated. Um all the wastewater in uh Wind Rock, Fort Epi, St. Michael's and, and areas of that nature all flow into one huge, large system. There's a portion of the, the main line that's very, very old. Uh so what we're gonna do, what's called a slip line. We're gonna put a, a liner inside, pull it through there and, and line a system so that uh we, we minimize um any potential failure uh because it would put all of those communities out of service if that was to happen. So that's one project that we're working on right now. Um we have a couple of uh wastewater facilities, one in, particularly one in Finyon that we're under construction right now, are renovating that system. Um on the broadband, uh we started out with a target of 31 locations to put a hotspot where people could go, uh especially students or, or workers that were, that were um quarantining off work or when work was shut down or people were working from home. Uh we put uh 31 hotspots where people could go in, in a relative secure area like the parking lot of a, of shopping or um parking lot in school, things of those nature, um where people could go there, get signal, log in. And uh at this point in time, those hotspots are free of service, are free of cost. Uh but because of needs identified and further requests, we've increased that from 31 to, to 40. Uh we actually have 38 of them in service now, so there's two left to, to continue to, to finish those up. Uh so those hotspots are all, all in place and working. On our telecommunications and broadband, uh we have several upgrades in our fiber optic backbone, um increasing from uh 10 gigabits all the way up to 100 gigabits. So there's a lot more flow, a lot more capacity. Uh we, we hear uh throughout and even today, uh as, as people were trying to connect on the system, uh where signals were dropping and things of that nature. So these upgrades will kind of increase those capacities and hopefully it'll begin to minimize more of those types of things where uh we have systems dropping or increased capacities so that more people can connect. Um once we get those things in place, there's also 102 broadcast stations that we're, that we're working on. Uh the broadcast stations are where they, they, it, it helps to get connected to the internet. And so the more of those that we have in place, uh the, the more connections um get reinforced with, with the internet. And I, I don't want to get too, too technical here. Um we've also have, have four towers that we're putting in to increase um uh connectivity. Uh Pine Dale, Bacabito, uh the summit area here outside of Wind Rock, uh and Wood Springs Towers. And we've also been able to acquire some property where we may be able to install two additional towers. And again, that's part of our legislation this afternoon. We, we will have enough funding by being frugal, frugal in how we're doing these and, and um to possibly build two additional towers. And again, we're asking for just flexibility in the language to increase the number from four to, to six. Uh but we will still maintain the dollars that, that um we were awarded. And then finally, we have a large connection, Cabrito to Page, where we're creating another fiber outlet that goes outside, connects to the greater um uh broadband grid. Uh so you'll have um the ability to flow data on and off Navajo um and, and, and increase the reliability of those systems. So that's kind of an update of where we are, a very quick overview of, of the projects we're working on. Uh many of them, you know, are in progress. Um uh the, the, we're, we're, we're on track right now. We're trying to continue to move forward. We're asking for some flexibility. In that flexibility, we may actually be able to serve a few more homes than what we uh, what we originally uh targeted. Um uh increase, you know, a little bit of the towers, uh some of those, some of those areas. We, we may be able to actually do more uh with the dollars that were awarded than what we originally um put into the proposal. So you know, it's just, it's just a matter of making sure that um the language is modified slightly so that we, we make sure that all these projects do qualify and that uh we can make use of these dollars and maximize the benefit to Navajo within the timeframe. Uh it's been a challenge trying to get through all of this with, with the timeframe. Uh we've had a lot of support from the council um in, in hearing us out and working with us, a lot of support from the president's office uh in working with us and, and by the divisions and departments, constantly trying to find ways to open doors um to minimize some of the processes and, and streamline some things so that things can, can move quicker and faster uh and, and be procured and, and put in the ground and in the air. So um I'm, I'm very happy with all the cooperative effort. There's a lot of dialogue, a lot of debate, a lot of challenges. But um we're continuing to move forward progressively and uh uh we're, we're, we're positive that uh we can get all these projects done that we have charge of. So thank you for the time and everybody take care and be safe out there.
Thank you, Mr. Kuntz, for that update from the N T U A and the work that they do for the Navajo Nation. So Yeah, it's a nice song, say Dr. Del Jimenez here, the executive director and so forth in the Navajo Department of Health. At least by here, by here, and they, uh, you know, they should be in our country, though. It's a nice song, gee, like, yeah, man, good evening, though. The A, yeah, quite a deep, the question, sorry, now, say, to the, for the enemy, eh? Um they go, huh, nah, nah, me, they, huh, nah. Um, you know, it's on me, when the man get beat me. President Nez, though, quite a D, um, eh? Um, this is David, so though, but the height now, eh, quite a D. Um, at least they talk, eh, 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 quite, he can't download, so. Uh thank you, listeners, for um calling in this afternoon. I just wanted to reiterate the increase of cases is what we're seeing again on the Navajo Nation. I have a couple of slides I wanted to share with you guys to kind of give you an idea um regarding the ability to um navigate um information. So on the Navajo Department of Health, we have a COVID-19 webpage. And every time you're interested in um what the latest numbers are, these are updated um every day. And also on here, you'll see the number of cases across the Navajo Nation. And for um the Navajo Nation cases, it's our Navajo Nation resident. So um as you look at the, the curve here regarding the number of cases per day, um we're almost um at 159. A couple of days ago, we went back down to 70. And so we're seeing community widespread. Our health advisory of um, the list of uncontrolled communities will be announced again today. And so we're reaching the highest peak of where we're at, where we were at in May. So we want to be careful to make sure that we continue to make sure that it doesn't continue. Um and those are things that we've already known um what to do. For example, all the preventive measures, but a lot of the cases have been related to gatherings and traveling off the Navajo Nation. And right now, with the inability to keep track of all these cases, um our contact tracers have a lot of work um ahead of them um to do a lot of this tracing and, but it's gonna become unmanageable at some point because um it's gonna be infecting everyone. So as we were in May, um those were at our highest peak in May. And at that time, I mean, what we experienced is a complete shutdown for a number of months where the tribe set down government offices and things like that. But living and with COVID-19 has changed and the perception of how we need to respond has changed. But um those were what we experienced and um you never know, we might have to do extreme mitigation measures um to ensure that we stop the spread of COVID-19. So um and that will impact our healthcare system. So across the Navajo Nation, um this graph shows uh the continued increase. So this a realization um that the numbers are going up again. Um we are experiencing this U shape here. I'm going back up. We took a deep dive early on. And so we're encouraging individuals on to get tested at their health facilities as well and also get your vaccine shot. And you'll find those all here on the Department of Health webpage, um flu shots. And also everyone should have the ability to access a health facility without getting rejected um for testing for COVID-19. So if you are, feel like you've been in close contact and you have symptoms, um access your local facility to get tested because it's very important to understand if you need to isolate or quarantine. And we also have isolation services as well. Another thing we need to also keep reminding ourselves of is the, the individuals that are um testing for COVID-19 are um in the middle-aged group, I mean, starting at 20 years old to about 59 middle-aged individuals. A wide range um of individuals that are testing positive and you see between 30 to 39 and 50 to 59 as um you see these overall counts. But the ones that are highly impacted um by um not surviving COVID-19 are those between 60 and 69 and all the way to 80, 60, 70, 80. You'll see this gradual incline on your risk of um passing some COVID increases based on your age, it seems like. And your risk of getting infected based on your own behavior is at a, um a younger age. So just know that um a younger age or a middle age. So it's important to realize those differences. The other thing, your, these graphs here show the reservation numbers for those that live on the Navajo Nation. But when you get to the border town areas, I guess your, your living environment changes when you're uh off the reservation. And your risk of getting COVID-19 while you're living off the reservation is very high at 20 to 29 years old and 30 to 39. So you see these um horizontal bar graphs show an entirely different situation compared to those living on the Navajo Nation and those in the border town. And if you are in the border town and go home on a regular basis, I mean, those are ways that um the disease can be transmitted. Also with the um depth, uh but they're very high at 80 plus in the border town areas. And so it's very important to note that the trending here is slightly different too. When you live off in the border town area, you could be at more increased risk of COVID-19 compared to those that are 60 to 69. And um we have our very oldest elders um passing away from COVID in the border town area. And so those are always things to remember. We do have our flu shot scheduled for all the facilities. There's phone numbers. Continue to navigate this as much as you can to get your flu shot as well. So those are just basic reminders of um information that you can um use in order to um prevent COVID-19. The other areas that we continually, I continually want to look at is also the um risk of um COVID-19 on a daily basis. We always want to continue to um share our preventive measures on a daily basis. So that will include um the regular message. So we go back one. So everyone should continue to wear a face mask um outdoors and public. And also I would say in your workplace, um to have those measures in place. So if you were not wearing a face mask and in, in your workplace, I think we, one recommendation is probably to start doing that to increase the transmission of COVID. So You cheat on the zero, uh, but the, 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 follow, they, and us, and on the, hey, um, how did the, um, chapter house, so, not, uh, car, though, and he, eh, the, quite, even, uh, car, though. Um uh also um at your workplace, like I mentioned, although it's on the, on the, eh, so so maintaining six feet distance of physical um distance at work, outdoors, anywhere you do your errands as well. Uh, don't you, uh, uh, can, that, yes, tell us, that, so, quite a D, 20 seconds, not, eh, on, that, eh, so, um, I do, hand sanitizer. You get him, oh, that's on, that, they go, eh, to, that, and so continue to wash your hands and if you um don't have access to water, use a hand sanitizer.
Only touch items that you can disinfect on a regular basis. We also have the celebration for um the Veterans Day, so we just want to make sure that for our Veterans Day um to avoid gathering, um this is a very important holiday, so I commend all the veterans that are um for keeping us safe all these years and protecting us as US citizens and Navajo citizens. And I think that um in this day and age with the pandemic, it's very important to celebrate safely, is important um in your communities and you're either putting yourself and loved ones at higher risk of becoming infected and spreading COVID-19 when you're are uh when you attend gatherings with people you don't live with. So in gatherings um with large groups is really it's prohibited at this point, that means in-person gatherings, at chapters, parades, um large ceremonies, family celebrations, in-person meetings. Um during the holiday with people you do live with is discouraged, so um just want to remind everybody. The um the question sorry, my name go a kissing the necky car go a ayopahasket do quite a deep the question sorry, last age of the um. A year go quite a deep um hey the the bed of the not go and the question do um the do the the latane kiss of the do quite a deep um the the zed do the chin do but the desk follow a quite. The um hey the day you thought you the bottom heart a in now. Be quite in him as an don't be chasing. Quite a deep um other deep quite a deep Veterans Day, this you quite celebrate they on quite ayopahasket the destiny. Although um the legal like a decision non of the quite a deep, so avoiding gatherings with people you do not live with is um very important because you don't know your risk level when you are um visiting with other multiple households and their exposure, you don't know where where they're where they come from because there is a lot of communities that are infected right now with um or identified as uncontrolled spread. Last week we had around twenty-nine communities and some are at moderate risk, but um there's a long list of communities that are uncontrolled spread across each agency, so it really doesn't matter where you're at right now regarding your risk, it's everywhere. So avoiding gatherings at any level is very important and to celebrate safely with people you live with um or either making phone calls or with your own family, celebrating Veterans Day safely with the people you live with is our recommendation. And that is to protect our elders and people with underlying health conditions by wearing a mask and staying at least six six feet apart. So any a quite a deep. Then him as an don't you take them many though quite a deep um this issue for kind of being too go a year go quite a deep. The question sorry, last age of the other for the dog not go a teh the in now quite a deep. Um ah a charge and talk it though all in and all how what the quite a deep um Veterans Day, you celebrate that county day. So those are just the importance of making sure um we want to protect our elders and also frequently clean and disinfect high-touch surface areas, as I mentioned, and handshaking and hugs too. Um it's very important to to still consider that, we still want to do that, it's human nature to do that, to continue to handshake, but as we have mentioned before, the risk of getting um transmission from COVID-19 is highly done if your hands are not clean and you're and you're hugging and you don't know um that if this is if an individual could be at increased risk. And and that really depends because there are individuals that are younger that don't show symptoms, so and there which we call asymptomatic, so getting in close contact with someone can and and they could be um COVID positive but don't show that they're sick. Um that's the dangerous part of COVID-19 is the disease is transmitted by by people not showing um hardly any symptoms of of illness, and so that's the precaution that we want everyone to know, even though you feel like you trust your family members and you know where they their whereabouts are. And that's one thing that we haven't really mentioned is questioning your own family members. Um if you're gonna decide to take the risk of inviting people to your home or any place, I mean, one thing we haven't mentioned is have you are you um sure of where their whereabouts are? And you might ask them questions. How does a non nona? Hey the that's a the question sorry, last age of the um thing um thing in the that um the noun non nona that's. Other than she don't zip um the the desk follow cut them off. I mean, those are just simple questions you can ask people because you think when you invite someone into your home that they follow all those safety precautions, especially around young people, that they continue to wear a mask um when they decide to gather, even though we don't recommend that. So just ensuring that you increase your knowledge of who is around you if you're gonna take the risk of um having someone come to your home or visit with, celebrate with a phone or video um is another recommendation as well. So another thing that we want to continue is when to be safe around others as well who have COVID-19. And so it's always important to um understand your risk of being around others now that we have transmissions of COVID-19 across the Navajo Nation, it's important to for people to understand when to be around others. It doesn't mean that you can be around another person if you test it positive two days, three days afterwards, so. Um the the question sorry, last age of the best not go quite a deep. It's a hanes giggo a nas na de is no e do quite a deep um the ne the noun non now abila. So um the um not ke um not. Um twenty-four hours since the last fever without use of fever recommendation, not being over on deep. Um. A cave could a quite a deep um teaching you zed though hey teni quite a deep twice since in the. A be kado in the quite a deep the the nepe noun non now abila. Although um. The it's a hanes biggo a to um the yego the question do the the teaching is biggo that that any for in the is linko. It the nepe noun non now abila though. So it's important to realize to be around others, I mean, you have to have at least ten days since symptoms first appeared, twenty-four hours since last fever and symptoms have improved. And then, as I mentioned, that if you do test positive, you might not have any symptoms. And so those are the asymptomatic individuals and they should be around others until ten days have passed and also continue to have no symptoms, so. It's important to always measure where and when to be around others because it's not safe until meeting the CDC requirements. And also, if you are a close contact of these individuals, that you should quarantine for fourteen days. And as I mentioned before, sometimes this don't develop until after two day, two days to fourteen days. It could be at eleven days, it could be two days afterwards. You just don't know, and I think we shouldn't underestimate this disease as we've been talking about for the last couple of months. Um the transmission of COVID has remained the same and it's a matter of this understanding that um gathering of any sort increases your risk. So I think that's the main um part I want to always mention is the exposure of um COVID-19 is that um what what is close contact when you want, when you're gonna be around others because you don't know. Um it could be around your family members and by not wearing a mask, it increases your risk. And so an exposure is being around someone that has COVID-19, so it could be your family members, as I mentioned, anyone you had face-to-face interactions with, who might have gone to get assistance somewhere um or it hurts it. We hope that's not happening. It could be um somewhere that you went to um complete some sort of um application somewhere in the city, but if you have face-to-face interactions with no mask, it increases your risk, so within um six feet of distance and fifteen minutes or longer. And then it could be your coworkers coming to work and not being able to understand that um that individual um was definitely um not um wasn't showing symptoms and you could be increasing your risk, it can be at work. We are tracking workplace exposure, so just know when the Navajo Nation, it doesn't matter if you are working for a federal agency, a state agency, a tribal program, all businesses, we encourage everyone to report cases because of um the spread and also ensuring that people are safe. So close contact can be your coworkers and as I mentioned, anyone you have touched, hugged or had physical contact with as well, anyone you have um been in a closed room or a space with, so this could be at a church or at a ceremony, especially when there are um not practicing of social distancing or wearing that mask increases your risk for COVID-19 exposure. Also had direct contact with any ill person or droplets as well, so. And not knowing that this person is not practicing good hygiene will increase your risk for COVID-19 as well. So this is just as a reminder to everyone, these all can be found on the Navajo Department of Health um Facebook page. And then in your workplace setting, continue to stay home when you're sick. We are hearing of more exposures where people are coming to work sick. All policies and procedures related to COVID-19 should relate to people not coming to work sick. Doesn't matter if you have allergies, you don't know, it could be um other illnesses, but if you have flu-like symptoms and we don't know if it's COVID or the regular flu or either allergies, people just need to stay home. Um those that's clear and simple. And so what we're hearing is that people are still coming to work sick and that shouldn't be the case, so monitor your health um while you're unsure if you have COVID or other um conditions, wearing your mask indoors at work. Um shared spaces are always important, there are space seals, you can have um a mask or you can have some areas have plexiglass. Wash your hands often, if you don't have access to a hand sanitizer, you can always wash your hands on a regular basis and also keeping your area clean and but covering your cough and sneezes if you're unsure. Even like I said, if you are sneezing or coughing, I don't think people should be at work. Avoid sharing objects and equipment as well. So always um check with your policy at work um to ensure there's a cleaning schedule. I know that we have a cleaning schedule, um there are shared conference room spaces, so limit individuals in the conference room spaces also regularly wipe down the um areas as well, the telechrom or either any sort of remotes that might be used on a um every hourly other basis. I think we try to clean things or encourage people to clean around their workstations at least twice or every two hours and then by the end of the day and before you start work, so there should be a regular cleaning schedule. And also um also reminding everyone um on a regular basis too if they forget. Clean and disinfect, and so we have the regular bleach water and rags and gloves available for everyone to do their own cleaning. You don't really necessarily have to rely on your um facilities management or housekeeping, we can take your own responsibility to clean your own desk area and possibly wipe other common commonly touched surface areas, and so it won't take more than one person to keep things clean, so just take it upon yourself to take on these responsibilities to reduce the transmission of COVID-19. Also keeping a hand sanitizer is always advised if you have it. Avoiding um having visitors at the workplace as well, um but if you have to have, if you have to meet a client or other another person, make sure that you practice all the safety protocols and make sure that you're not congested in one conference room, just to make sure that you have minimal um close-to-close contact, and I think people still do the um elbow bumps and other ways to discreet, but I think that as much as you can, um virtual meetings should be the the way to conduct businesses um or meetings or conferences, um not through face-to-face. Also, reporting an exposure, as I mentioned, on the Navajo Department of Health webpage for all places of business, there is a tab there to report an exposure and you can just enter your email and your phone number and someone will get back with you. And we work with our local health facilities to complete the investigations and we also work with the different agencies and to ensure there are proper cleaning and also closures of places of business, especially if you know that a food um establishment um has a positive case, anyone can report actually. If you hear about it in the community, we can always help confirm these um rumors or if it's real, to make sure that the businesses are following COVID-19 exposures because we're holding everyone accountable to make sure that their policies in order to operate on the Navajo Nation are to reduce transmission of COVID-19 by practicing safe protocols that were provided on the Navajo Nation reopening plan. So on the Navajo Nation reopening plan, businesses that are operating have to have policies and procedures to protect their their customers, their employees, their clients and everyone else that comes and sets foot in their door. So without those policies and that they're not following safety protocols and then we have to go to extreme measures of shutting them down if they continue to have cases or exposures in their office, everyone has a responsibility to reduce transmission of COVID-19. Once again, avoid large gatherings, I think I had mentioned that before, and always just reassuring that we have to continue to avoid any large gathering, especially among multiple households. In our previous public health order, no, our current public health order does state that um you should avoid any gathering with the people outside your household and also that you should consider isolating or quarantining if you've been exposed to COVID-19. So those are the differences that we have in the current um public health order. Then some statistics um that we have and be a Dene warrior on the Navajo Nation, more Navajo men than women lost their lives to COVID-19. If you were exposed to someone with COVID-19, quarantine yourself from others. If you're experiencing COVID-19 symptoms, get medical attention as soon as possible. Stop the spread by protecting your family, so always just a word of encouragement and stay home is our message. So the new message under um the Health Command Operations Center and through tribal leadership with the Nautani President Nez and other tribal leaders is to stay local to stay safe. So we want to continue to encourage everyone to follow the CDC guidelines and prevention messages and get ready for the weekend. Um also ensure that you are um up to date on your communities. If you want to know if your chapter is experiencing uncontrolled spread, that information will be made available, so just know that um there is a list now. Um sometimes um we don't pay attention and we wonder is is the community that I'm living in at high risk of uncontrolled spread of COVID-19? And there is a list now, so. A Jin hit that the husband do quite a deep the question sorry, last age of the quite a deep. Not me who quite a deep ah that's a thank you chapter house that. That's a quite I you they go but these people the most no see flag and hit that the husband do a quite a deep. Um I found that in these or quite a deep um bond that he's not about the meat um quite a deep from the Navajo Department of Health. So thank you, everyone, for listening, um stay local and stay safe and also continue to uh speak to your family members and extended friends or anybody about not gathering with other household members, so. That's my message today from the Navajo Department of Health, and now I'm going to introduce Dr. Terri Vaz, she's with the Tinley Comprehensive Healthcare Facility and she's also a member of our Health Command Operations um Epidemiology Team, so thank you, everyone, for listening.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. Um thank you so much to President Nez, Vice President Lizer, um to Dr. Jen, Mr. Rexley, thank you all for the work that you do, and I also want to take this time to also thank the communities and the community members for helping us and working and working with us as we try to get through these um next few weeks and months. I I'm gonna just try to summarize the gating indicators and how we track Navajo Nation and how we do compare it to other nations, and so where we are now and then what can we do to try to protect ourselves and those that we care for, those that we love. And so let me go ahead and do that. And so again, just as a friendly reminder, this is how we do track our key indicators to assess where we currently are and to try to plan for our public health response and for recovery. And so what you see here is that we, you know, President Nez and Dr. Jim spoke to, you know, what are the patterns and cases? What what is our current testing capacity as well as, you know, hospital capacity? So if someone were to be sick and ill and they required required hospital care, what is our capacity in the in hospitals such as in our intensive care unit? And then our ability to try to contain COVID-19 through contact tracing. All of this really speaks to our ability, our ability to contain and to slow down spread. And so this speaks to, you know, disease spread, um you have different phases, extensive community spread, and sometimes this has been interchanged with uncontrolled spread, and that's where containment and contact tracing becomes very difficult. Um substantial community spread, minimal to moderate and zero to minimal community spread. And what does that mean and how does that translate to the actions that you need to take or that we need to take? And so as President Nez mentioned, you know, here for Navajo Nation, we know that we saw, we saw our first wave and we saw the peak early in May and we know how that felt. Um and now, as you see, is that our cases continue to rise um since Labor Day and we are clearly into our second wave. Now, this is not unique to the Navajo Nation, as President Nez mentioned. You know, we are tracking very closely to what's being experienced across the United States. Um the only difference now is that before, during our first wave, it was Navajo Nation, maybe the northeast states and maybe the west coast, but now it's it's happening across the United States as well as across Navajo Nation and the four states. And so this, our ability to respond and the resources available to us um are different. And so looking, we do look at this very closely, and so we look at by the um several, you know, service areas combined with um our IHS facilities and with our tribal health organizations, because that's where the local response happens and we try to understand where the local spread is, is there any way we can engage community leaders and engage the local response team to try to come up with a a cohesive, comprehensive plan to, again, to try to contain to as well as to slow down spread. Um and as you see here, all of the areas, including New Mexico satellite areas, with the exception for defiance, are in extensive uncontrolled spread. Fort Defiance has substantial spread. And then we do look at their test positivities as well as, you know, can, do they have enough contact tracers? Um this graph was shown earlier and essentially the take-home message is, we're trailing behind Utah, but really all four-corner regions are experiencing an increase in cases and this continues to be. Um and another way to look at that is you, if you see here, whether it's orange or red, we are in substantial to extensive community spread. Um and we are having difficulty in containing this, and so now it's really focused on can we slow this down so that we can contain it? And that means that, you know, that means it's at this time, it is considered uncontrolled, uncontrolled spread. Our outbreak, how fast is this happening? Our outbreak is doubling in size every two to three weeks, and so that tells us that it's happening fast. We see cases rise and it's happening fast. Um our test positivity, you may have heard this on the news and uh and the way other states report it and the way the national um response reports it, is that it sort of speaks to what's happening. And so right now, our test positivity is fourteen-five percent, so what does that mean? It means that one out of seven people that get tested, their test results come back positive. Um and so if you're in a family of seven, consider that means one out of seven people, it could be your family or household members. The chances are that one out of seven people go and get tested will come back positive. The other concerning trend that we are seeing and we're following very closely is we want to make sure that we are able to care for our sickest people, right? We want to make sure that we have resources available, staffing available for our sickest. Um and that also includes ICU beds, this is intensive care units where if you're really sick and you need potentially a ventilator um and you need acute care, we have to have that staffing, those resources available. And what we are seeing is we are seeing that the percent of staffed ICU beds continue to trend up. The blue line just indicates IHS facilities, the yellow line indicates tribal health organizations, and then the green line is combined. And so even though we're right now hovering between seventy to seventy-five percent, the we are tracking and following this very closely because it's going up. We also rely on sending our sickest folks out to our surrounding states and we know those resources are being filled. Um just an example of that, this is just tracking ICU bed capacity across the four states. And what we've heard and what we know at this time is that in New Mexico, those ICU bed you ICU bed utilized have gone up past what we call um our eighty percent threshold. That's where resources and staff are highly limited and may compromise care. We also know that this is happening in Utah, we're following Arizona very closely. Um we also realize that we need to make sure that there's contact tracing staff available and at this time, and our ability um to do contact tracing is influenced by the staff availability and we do not have enough contact tracers. But we are working very hard to ensure that we have staffing and we can surge in staffing to to really meet this demand that we're experiencing. Um this was shared as well and the take-home message here is like if you look in the four-corner regions, look at all the counties in New Mexico, most of them are red, almost all the counties in Utah with the exception of maybe six or seven are all red. And so this is what, this is our experience, and so what how this impacts is it's as as these four regions start to feel cases go up, those resources such as hospital beds, hospital staff, um hospital equipment, that those resources become less available to us here on Navajo Nation. Um and so just new things from this week compared to last week is that we, our test positivity has gone up, like I said, one in seven people tested, the results will come back positive. Uh we have continued to see an increases in cases and we do recognize that there is a delay, so this does not include cases that may, you know, the rise that we saw over the weekend as well. Um and so what does that mean in regards to gating and these gating indicators? We didn't meet three of our four gating indicators, right? And we do know that we have substantial to extensive community spread with difficult um difficulty to control and contain. Um we are following hospitals' capacity very closely because we see what's happening in our surrounding regions and we see the trend here as well. Um and that may impact our ability to care for our sickest folks. And so just some things that we have learned and I just want to reiterate what Dr. Jim has said is, you know, what can, you know, the so what? So I just showed you a bunch of stuff, and so what can you do and what can we do to really protect ourselves and protect those that we care about and those that we love? Given the circumstances, right? I know a lot of people are feeling the fatigue settling in um now that we're into November. Um but please continue to wear a mask, we know masks work, washing your hands and maintaining social distance. Uh we are asking people at this time to please to not gather with friends and family outside of your household, and I'll explain that a little bit more. At, you know, COVID-19 risk and activities, what's high risk? Anything that involves crowding, prolonged and frequent contact, poor ventilation plus an infectious person, and remember, an infectious person may or may not display symptoms. Um examples of high risk is singing, speaking loudly, indoor gatherings, indoor dining. Um lower risk, brief visits to the places of essential businesses with safeguards in place. We know those are lower risks, that's like the gas station, grocery stores. Um and consider if you feel that you might be, you may put your family at risk because, you know, because people still have to work, right? And so people still have to travel off the reservation or travel to work. And so if you're coming and traveling from areas of higher risk, consider quarantine and you know what, consider wearing a mask around your family, that's okay too, masks do work. A lot of this speaks to what we've learned through our contact tracing. Over the last ten days, most of our clusters have been linked back to those that traveled or worked off the reservation. They may not be symptomatic, come home, and this is in the last ten days, the clusters involved, this infectious person comes into the home and, you know, there's a birthday party, there's a funeral, um there's a ceremony, and that continues to be our driver to spread. And so I know, I know our community members are safe and they're out in the public, is when we come home and we see our friends and families and we let our guard down. And so there are things that we can do to consider how we, what we know about transmission of COVID-19. We know that there is airborne transmission, and what that means is that the virus does travel through the air. So when you're in an indoor space um with poor ventilation and if you add more people into that space, the ability to vent the, for ventilation and take that, take virus out of the air slows down, and that's why it increases risk. Um and so knowing all of that, things that you can do, as I mentioned, is, you know, for for the time being, we're asking not to gather with friends and family outside your household. And if you think that you may put them at risk, consider wearing a mask, then that's okay too. Um, thank you.